...from curving on because everything freely flows directly in this direction and then we come down to the swell and freely go into the basin.
Just on northern side adjacent to the basin.
Okay.
I mean, from an engineering standpoint, you wouldn't have any objection to it, though that it is required by the ordinance for the planner, I mean, the, uh, you would.
I wouldn't have any objection. I think on that radius per owner's property landscape, I think you may, and I would have to defer to, to an engineer, but I think typically in those situations, the edge of the pavement is thicker to maintain a stable edge, doesn't break off.
We do do like a stone, just a little stone coping wall on the outside.
Um, one other thing we discussed was fencing around the basin. The ordinance requires that fencing by the basin.
Yes, what we request is a waiver of fencing. However, we would have provisions in the bonding and on the site plan, so final, that if the basin does hold work, which he really looked out for with time, we do anticipate this to be a dry basin and we drain probably within 24 hours. Beautiful same as well. We don't anticipate this basin being wet at any time other than that first 24 hours of major rainstorm. So I would request waivers of the fencing only because aesthetically we would have a very nice buffer of existing vegetation on all three sides and then in addition to that are shade trees.
Our, we, our office wouldn't have any objection to it, given it's a private facility, efficient, whatever the objection is. I would also like to point out, as part of this application, there is a minor subdivision component. Our recommendation that that component of the application we deemed component, that it could be addressed, should the board approve use variance of the preliminary site plan, it could be addressed at the time of, just because there wasn't that information submitted for that application. If you're amenable to all the other items within our review letter, I really don't think we need to get into the engineering details. I did just want to nail down the little park, the parking a little better, and I don't know if you or our gentleman in the page really do appropriate to do that. I'll do that to you.
Big technical.
Yes, actually, as Mr. Lekker has in statement of his report, the requirement is mandatory to parkings law. If we use our technique model for a one to two ratio for the treatment center, as we discussed earlier, we anticipate a maximum of 257 parking stalls, actually less than 246 required. However, we would propose on day one, it's roughly 257 in all. However, as, as a good gesture, we would move the subdivision line over a dozen hundred feet and we would create a banking system and we would show a gray area on the final site plans that would actually provide the remaining 80 parking stalls to comply with the ordinance. So by contrast, by bond, it would be on the site plan. If in fact, if this fourth treatment building is built and we are just really, you know, you know, it's a success and actually the parking is more than we thought, whereas as originally anticipated, we have the land, it's banked, we have the ability and would be bonded, we would go to that next step.
Well, I think there's some confusion because, I mean, the way we reviewed this application, we've got, based on previous testimony, is that the patients within the residential treatment centers were going to be able to come. Now, that's, that's not true. So, um, with that in mind, um, you know, our, our recommendation, you know, the residential treatment centers don't really fit into category. Okay, so you guys came up with the idea of, well, it's appropriate to do for every two patients, one parking stall. Our recommendation was one parking space per patient. Again, thinking they're going to be able to leave, can carry on jobs, do other things that they would require cars. That changes things. And it may even change one for every two. You're giving testament that they're there for visitors and such. I guess, you know, it's, it's just, it's kind of confusing that we're dealing with at this point. But, um, I guess, you know, I, I think it's something we could, between you and I, you know, talk about further between preliminary and final. I don't, it doesn't seem that there would be a need anymore to have an additional hundred spaces to bring into that, you know, the additional banking that you're making reference to. It may be able, even possible to bank what you're doing right now. But I did have one question that came to mind in regard to the outpatient facility. How is that addressed in your part of the application?
Actually, good question. I have to address it with JP or actually Danny Carisi on how many actual patients. You might have to come up and help me out there.
Mr. Wilkins, how many spaces are in the middle on your plan? How many spaces are there?
Uh, it's roughly a hundred.
I just wanted, while she's speaking, I just wanted to have the board know that this category is not specifically listed in our ordinance for number of parking spaces. And as Mr. Melas stated, we're thinking if they were going back and forth to work, it would make sense that they all may have a vehicle, should accommodate them. It's up to the board in a situation like this, if you feel confident with the applicant's testimony, the number of spaces they're providing, based on the use, if your discretion.
We don't need that many spaces if they're good enough to accommodate.
Well, the other, the other concern I have as a planner is I particularly don't like to see an overabundance of pavement when it's not necessary. You, of course, particularly I don't care for it in shopping centers when they're only being used at Christmas time. But the nature of, it's a good thing that it's there, but, so I would err on the side of we, if we can work with less, but then have a provision to accommodate more if it need be.
Yes.
That would, that would satisfy, I think, everyone's goal.
When we come back for final, if we get to that point, we could, between Jim and I, Ken, we could work out a phasing plan that would coincide with the expansion of the facility as we bring on the buildings online, which is much more beneficial and more environmentally pleasing. With regard to Ken's comment on the hundred parking stalls, there's 97 employees at any given time, which is a large shift. That basically leaves 35 parking spaces open for visitors, for outpatient personnel and visitors that come to the outpatient facility. So at any given time, and to believe that would be adequate. I think that would definitely be more than adequate for the outpatient.
Based on what, like, what, what's going on in the outpatient facility? What's, you know, how many vehicle trips is it generating? If you can address it, that's great. And, you know, I think, I think what we can agree on is that there is, you have a gigantic site here, okay, and you've got the room to accommodate more. But we need what it's going to be and, you know, based on that, what's the requirement for and how many are you going to propose? Okay? So that's got to be locked down based on sound numbers.
Absolutely.
Before we sit down, there's one last thing. Could you just identify, because it's going to mess up our presentation, just got to identify A-12, even though I know that Mr. Combs is going to testify, could you just identify?
Yes, A-12 is our aerial view of the entire property.
Is that a mark? Do you have that?
Yes, please.
Mr. Rashad?
Can I have one, one question?
Yes.
Just, just one question, Mr. Wilkins. You had made the comment that there would be no family stayovers on the weekend, correct?
Correct. That's right.
Rashad, you were previously sworn, is that correct?
Not, not before I was sworn.
Did you come up with it?
Oh, yes, I, yes, I did, yes.
That's good.
That short-term memory falls.
By who were you, by who were you?
Mesa Consulting.
Okay, and are you a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Okay. And I'm just going to briefly show you what's been marked as A-13, which is your resident, correct?
That is correct.
And is that an accurate characterization of your professional qualifications?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Would you describe the scope of your study that you did for this project?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's good to be here tonight. My name is Maurice Rashad. I'm a traffic engineer. I've been doing this for 28 years. Do I need to move my qualifications or not?
Um, you didn't indicate your licensed professional engineer. Have you been accepted by several of the planning units only?
At least 150.
I think you go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, we, I did a traffic study to assess the impact of this development on the surrounding street system. I went along the county highway, the county road fronting development, and we took traffic counts from end to end, from the signal at College to the signal at Hextown. We analyzed these signals. We also analyzed all the driveways in between Ring, Coll, Madison. And then we did a trip generation for this development and we added all the traffic to the existing traffic and analyzed again. That's basically how you do a traffic study. So we have the before and after conditions. And then if you saw my report, I have a very complicated table that shows you all of the levels of service comparing the before and after at all the signalized and the unsignalized intersections, as well as at the driveways that will be serviced in the site. And as you see, all of the levels of service will remain the same. Now, how did we do that? Without going into a lot of detail, we employed a combination of methods. We relied on the ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which publishes information for trip generation. We also relied on common sense in terms of indicating or figuring out how many trips would be coming and going to this facility. And we didn't say for parking. But I think what's most important for you on this board is, is a couple of things. One, as I said, the traffic impact is negligible. But more importantly is the fact that this facility is probably one of the least intense traffic-wise when you compare it to the other permitted uses. And I did some analysis. I looked at, for example, what a traditional hospital would generate. I looked at what a school would generate or another education institution, and all of them generate a lot more traffic. As a matter of fact, I had a specific analysis for a hospital facility. And in the AM, for example, it generates almost double the number of trips coming and leaving this facility. Aside from that, we have, our numbers, in my opinion, are very conservative. I'll give you one example. We said, for example, we have 97 employees or staff members coming to this facility in the morning. Well, the shift starts at seven. That means they have to come in at quarter to seven, six-thirty, or before seven. At that time, the peak hour has not started. The peak hour for most of these intersections start at seven-thirty or at eight. That means seven-thirty to eight-thirty or eight-thirty to nine. But what we did, we took these 97 trips and we added them to the highest peak hour just to make sure that everything is okay. And that's, in short, a summary of my presentation. I think this is a, a very good lane use from a traffic perspective. And if I'm sitting in your shoes, I would like to see it rather than anything else on that property.
Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I would just say that, I would just add that we did review the traffic impact study, summarize it. I would just add that the property fronts, all county road, the trims, your impact.
I'll show you A-14, Mr. Rashad, would you like to identify that?
Yes, that is the traffic study I conducted for, and I spoke of.
And that's been filed with, but I'm just going to begin, this is A-14.
Thank you. Just one comment, please, that council's local ordinance, we asked for a few other things that are typical, eight, maybe eight typical in a traffic impact statement. And I just ask that you amend your report to include those. I'm trying to find them. They deal with bus, bus routes, things of that nature. I don't know if you saw my report.
What we could do.
The location of transit routes and stops and transit facilities, including off-street private facilities, the location of school bus routes, the location of pedestrian crosswalks, recommendations for automobile reduction techniques, and a schematic plan for recommended improvement. These, these are requirements of our ordinance. So I'm asking if they're not willing, if you're not going to provide and that you need to request a waiver.
We, we have the problem. What I would recommend is these become conditions and we submit them as, if the board wishes to approve the application, they'll become conditions in terms of resolution compliance at some point. And we'll revise the report and we'll submit the report.
Submit it as the final through.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't think they affect the trip generation or the quality of service, but it's just more informative.
If any, if any impact, it will reduce trip generation. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Combs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Your report is this one, correct?
Yes, I was.
And you're a licensed professional planner who was engaged by the applicant, is that correct?
This is correct.
Okay, and occasion that engagement, have you been to the site on one of your occasions?
Yes.
And A-12, which you're going to testify from, which is, I guess, is an aerial photograph, does that represent a fair and accurate characterization of the existing site conditions?
Yeah, that's an aerial photo of the site and the immediately surrounding area. The property boundaries are outlined in red, which includes both lots, which are subject to the application as a result of the minor subdivision. That's purpose to, to increase the area of existence.
And also, Mr. Combs, you were, you reviewed the Gloucester Hampshire zoning ordinance, you reviewed Lechner's report, General's report, as well as the application, which you helped prepare, is that correct?
That's correct.
Also, is it fair to say that you were in the room when Dr. DeShields testified, when Dr. Carice testified, and the other professionals?
Yes.
And part of your testimony, as far as entitlement to these approvals, is going to be based upon the foundation they laid for your conclusions as a professional licensed plan, is that correct?
Very much so.
Well, please, please continue and please indicate your view of whether this is a complying application. If so, the four treatment buildings should be approved based on legitimate planning principles.
Yes, thank you. Just to backtrack just slightly to sort of set the stage for my opinion on this matter. We appeared before this board on the margin in 2015, at which time this board determined that residential treatment facility was a permitted use in this zone. At that time, there was discussions about different types of housing that would be proposed, and the board withheld approval on that use. So the, the resolution 142050BD made a determination that, and correctly so, that residential treatment facility would be akin to a hospital, and such would be a permitted use in the institutional district in which the site is located. I would add also that there are other uses that are permitted in this zone. I would also say this could be related to residential healthcare facilities permitted, cemetery rooms permitted, these are all very similar uses.
I believe you just referred to a particular resolution which was marked. Is that an accurate copy of that resolution?
It looks like my copy, yes.
Okay. And that's marked as exhibit?
Exhibit A-16.
Thank you.
Following that determination, we filed an application with the planning board, very similar to the application that's before the board tonight, supporting plans. Mr. Lechner made a interpretation that, that this use was not consistent with the use that the board had determined as a residential treatment facility, specifically because of the four treatment buildings that we've been discussing tonight. And we came back to the board for an interpretation relative to that issue. And the board at that time, I think it was a January 13 hearing, and the board upheld Mr. Lechner's interpretation that those four treatment buildings are not, should not be included as part of the residential treatment facility. At that time, we presented testimony, and I adamantly believe that it should have been considered a permitted use and by virtue of the I-NT district's stated purpose, and it identifies that uses in this district are often in a complex, complex of campus for integrated residential office, recreational, healthcare, houses of worship, and other ancillary uses with its primary function. So in my eyes, from a planning perspective, that's precisely what these units, these step-down units represented, the residential component of the treatment facility, and the critical treatment component. Tonight, I think the board heard a lot more detailed testimony on those, the operations of those facilities. I'm hopeful that if, if this went to a vote again, given the testimony that's been provided by the experts, that the board would see that these units are in fact an integral part of the treatment that's offered to the, to the disabled patients in this facility. And as such, it would be a permitted use. Nonetheless, we're here for a use variance, so I'll, I'll address the municipal land use law criteria required for granting the variance. And the first of which would be the positive criteria. This use as a residential alcohol and drug rehabilitation facility has been determined to be inherently beneficial use. As, as board, I'm sure knows, inherently beneficial use is defined in the municipal land use law as a use which is universally considered value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such uses include, but it's not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, excuse me, group home, or wind, solar, photovoltaic energy facility or structure. So, I mean, it's very strong language relative to land use, the municipal land use laws, stating that this is a use that is universally considered a benefit to the, to the public. Uses classified as such as inherently beneficial uses are deemed to promote the general welfare by the very nature. And thus, they satisfy the positive criteria under the municipal land use law, advancing the purposes of the zone. This use is further substantiated by the state legislature. Drug rehabilitation, and alcohol rehabilitation treatment has become very prominent in recent years. It's a big topic of the conversation during the elections. And the governor of New Jersey has been very active in promoting legislature to address this issue. Under New Jersey statute seventeen, thirty, colon, sixty, dash, one, reads, is declared to be a public policy of the state that human suffering and social and economic loss caused by drug addiction and matters of grave concern to the people of the state is imperative that a comprehensive program be established implemented through the facilities of the state, several counties, the federal government, and local private agencies to prevent drug addiction and to provide diagnosis, treatment, care, rehabilitation for drug addicts to the end, that these unfortunate individuals may be restored to good health and again become useful citizens in the community. So this is, this is actually legislature words out of the legislature. And again, under New Jersey statute seventeen twenty, colon, two BD dash one, legislature finds and declares that alcoholism, drug abuse are major health problems facing residents of the state. The full resources of the state, including problems facing residents, the full resources of the state, including counties, municipalities, and residents of the state must be mobilized in a persistent, sustained manner in order to achieve a response capable of meaningful, meaningfully addressing not only the symptoms, but the root causes of this pervasive problem. So, you know, this is a statement of public policy. This use directly addresses that intention, that state of need. Again, the testimony that's been provided by the two doctors, I think demonstrates that these specific uses are integral to this inherently beneficial use, an integral part of the treatment, and as such, would be covered under the same classification as inherently beneficial, inherently beneficial use. There's also been testimony in addressing the merits of inherently beneficial use, there has to be a need for the use. There's been a great deal of testimony provided to that extent, that if there's other, if there's a operation of facilities which would make this facility unnecessary, this board could determine that it's not needed. But that certainly is not the case here. So, as an inherently beneficial use, we certainly meet the positive criteria. We also, in addition to meeting that criteria, we feel the site not only is inherently beneficial, but the site itself is particularly well-suited to issues, which is not a requirement that this board needs to, to hear relative to an inherently beneficial use, but it just further strengthens the merits of our application. The site, the exhibit there shows clearly that the site is certainly large enough to accommodate the facilities proposed. I don't know if, if it's clear, I'll step over to the exhibit just to show the scale. The improvements that we have brought in tonight basically encompass this area of the site. This is the parking, Ted had discussed, you know, the existing EGA. These are the buildings and paved parking area that are basically located here. This is the large EGA parking area that was constructed by the college. So that sort of puts the site at scale, property extends well beyond, it's over 158 acres, 26 acres, subdivided, right here. This green area represents a weapons buffer. Notice that this area back here is restricted weapons, and that's a green area, it's a weapons buffer. So this area is a protected, restricted area that will be due to development, thereby providing a backup to the usage to the east of the site. The chief of the road runs north and set out this direction to the road. We have the county college, correct, across the street. And there's a small structure to the north of us which identified in the tax act as a youth, a youth house. So I assume it's a somewhat taken use to, like, to lower like this. So the site is technically suited because it's a protocol concerned area for institutional uses. It's large enough to accommodate the improvements that are required. It depends on roads that are capable of handling the traffic that was generated, and the surrounding uses are compatible. uses are compatible with the proposed use since it's a institutional zone. So those two factors together, you know, address...